Can we please call the roll?
Hanson.
Here.
Wojciechowski. Miller.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Mugrower.
Here.
Mayor Palmary.
Here.
Present six.
All right, so the first item that we have this evening is New Ordinance 21-256, Amending Rules Pertaining to Council, Board, and Commission Meetings in Response to COVID-19 Coronavirus Emergency to Eliminate Base Covering Staff Recommends Waiving the Rules. Did we receive any correspondence or registrations of comments, notes?
I did not receive anything.
Okay. So we'll take a motion and a second on waiving the rules.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion on waiving the rules? All right, go ahead and take the vote, please.
Hanson.
Aye.
Wojciechowski. Miller.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Mayor Palmary.
Aye.
Carried six.
And back to our motion, amending the rules pertaining to council board and commission meetings in response to COVID-19 coronavirus emergency to eliminate base covering requirements.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Hanson.
Here.
Wojciechowski. Miller.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Mayor Palmary.
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Please take the roll.
Hanson.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Mayor Palmary.
Aye. And we will reconvene at 5:15 for the Clearwell Project Workshop.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and Radio Simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9.
Clearwell Project. And with us this evening, Mr. Rabby, you want to kick that off?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have with us tonight Linda Moore from Jacobs. Linda is the project manager for Jacobs, who's their engineering consultant, working on the design for the Clearwells project. Seeing as this project has kind of, you know, been on hold for about four years now, and we're finally getting moving with the design and needing to get everything updated into current code standards, we thought this would be a prudent time for us to come to you and give you a little bit of a feel for how we're proceeding and what some of the look of the project is going to be, so we can get some feedback from you while we continue to move forward. Some of our next steps will be scheduling more public informational meetings and kind of recreating the process that we had started working through four or five years ago. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Linda. She's got a presentation, and if you have questions at any time throughout, please feel free to just throw them out there. Linda, take it away for us, please.
Thank you, James, and thank you all for making time in your busy schedule for reintroduction to this project, the Oshkosh Water Utility Clearwells Replacement Project, which is at the water filtration plant. So our purpose today in joining you is to describe the project and review our schedule and cost. We have a couple of visuals that we've prepared, and as James mentioned, we value your input on them, purely aesthetic, and then it will be open for questions. So, this Clearwells Replacement Project is a major capital improvement at the water filtration plant, and as James said, anytime you want to ask a question, please do, and we'll just jump right into it. For folks who haven't been to the water filtration plant, it's located on Lake Winnebago, Merritt Street to the north, pardon me, Merritt Ave to the north and Washington to the south. And this is a project where we're working to be very sensitive, not only to matching or being substantially similar to existing facilities on site, but also being respectful of the multiple historic homes and how much the community accesses Lake Winnebago from Lake Shore Drive, from Merritt, and from Washington. So why are we doing this project? We're doing this project because there are buried concrete tanks called Clearwells at the plant that store finished water. This is the product that's pumped out to customers. And when they were constructed many years ago, they met current, then codes, but since then, the codes have changed. And now, state statute requires drinking water be stored above the 100-year floodplain and above an elevation where it could be impacted by groundwater. And this graphic to the right shows kind of a section cut through part of a Clearwell and part of a pump station. We call it the wet well, where the pumps draw water from the tank and then pump it out, convey it to the community. And both the pump stations and the Clearwells no longer comply with state statutes. And even without that requirement, which is relatively new, it's been on the water utilities radar screen for several years to replace these assets because two of them, the North Clearwell and the Center Clearwell, which are shown in this aerial photograph within the blue outline in the southeast corner of the site, they're over 100 years old. And the third Clearwell, the South Clearwell, that has a small pump station on top of it, is 60 years old. During my remarks tonight, I will be mentioning some other structures at the filtration plant site. One of them is what we call the CT Backwash Supply Basin. That name stands for a chlorine contact basin for disinfection, and it's a source of water, a supply of water for backwashing filters. And next to that is a holding tank that's used to manage dirty or spent filter backwash water as we handle that wastewater. And then on the northwest corner of the filter plant itself are basins that are the sedimentation basins. And the architectural finish, what you see from the street for the sedimentation basins, the holding tank, and the CT Backwash Supply Basin are similar. So, I'm not going to read all the words on this slide. The story is, there's been a wide variety of very detailed studies conducted to develop the scope of the Clearwells Replacement Project, which was designed in 2017 and included not only replacement of the Clearwells and the pump stations that I mentioned, but also the plant's emergency generators to provide backup electrical supply in the event of a power outage. And when we took that project to the Public Service Commission, they said, "Stop, timeout. We would like the city to prepare justification for the pump station capacities of 16 million gallons per day that we had in the design." The filter plant capacity is 16 million gallons per day. And they said, "You know, given historic water use, which has been declining in Oshkosh, which has been declining in all communities across the country because of passive water conservation that's achieved through water-efficient plumbing fixtures, your toilets, your wash machines, your dishwashers, the community doesn't have to do anything, and you're using less water." So that's common across the state and the country.
Pardon me, as a percentage, what is our shrink saying? And if you don't have the number, I apologize.
I have numbers.
Just, can you just tell us, as a percentage, why'd you say in the last 10 years, how much is our usage shrink?
I would say between 15 and 20%.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's been about 2% to 3% annually, I believe, Linda, is that right?
It could be. I'm kind of thinking of an aggregate, and every year changes discretionary water use, your summer water use on a day like today for watering all those new plants you got. That's impacted by how much precipitation you get. So, but generally, everybody is down across the state. And Public Service Commission is committed to not overbuilding infrastructure, which is a good thing. It's one of those things we have to balance on big projects. So, city went back to the drawing board and prepared new water demand forecasts for the planning horizon out to year 2040, and then revised the project scope, including some new design criteria, as James mentioned. The new set of codes were adopted by the state, so we have to bring everything up to code. And over this last few years, the ozone equipment, which is your chemical that you use for primary disinfection, has been having some reliability issues and was ranked by the water utility as one of the top priority risk reduction projects they wanted to implement. And because of that, it's already in your CIP, your 2020 to 2024 CIP. And with that complicated project happening basically at the same time as Clearwells, we thought, put it all together, have one general contractor, less finger pointing, easier control of schedule. And, but the project does get larger in terms of scope and cost and complexity. So where we are today is in this project redesign and permitting phase. In 2017, this graphic on the left shows kind of an animation of what we envisioned being the major new facilities, a new intermediate pump station on top of the CT Backwash Supply Basin, pumping water to fill the new at-grade reservoirs, and then a pump station located between the reservoirs, we call it the high lift pump station, and that pump station sends water out into the system. And we're putting in 2 million gallons of finished water storage, then it was 16 million gallons per day pump station capacity, and, as I mentioned before, replacing emergency In 2017, just like this year, we are meeting with the Planning Commission, we're meeting with you, we're meeting with the public through neighborhood meetings to provide information about the project, because it does have a big visual impact, and it's a big investment in the water utility. So we will be fulfilling all the requirements for city permitting, not only through the planning department, but also through inspection services, meeting with all those inspectors to review the project with them, so that when they get it to review it, they're up to speed, and explaining why we have to do this project and put these tall structures in, and temporarily during construction, limit access that people now enjoy from Lake Shore Drive. This graphic on the right shows a long Lake Shore Drive that we plan to keep 15 parking places open to the public throughout construction. We plan to have a group of 15 available for city employees or visitors to use because of how disturbed the site will be during the project. And then there's the portion that's immediately east of the reservoirs and the new high lift pump station that is going to be blocked off and needed by the tank manufacturer, constructor, just to do their work. So, jumping forward to 2021, we're still planning to construct 2 million gallons of new finished water storage. We're proposing to construct 13.7 million gallon per day pump stations instead of the 16 we had proposed in 2017, and instead of the 17.3 that exists there today. Why that number? That is a number, looking forward out to 2040, based on the city's community development plans, based on East Central Wisconsin's Regional Planning Commission population projections. That's a good number for having a high level of confidence, a 95% probability of having sufficient water for all your potential futures that we modeled. Still replacing the same capacity generators, and now we are also replacing equipment in kind, straight-up replacement, same amount of liquid oxygen or lock storage, and the same capacity ozone generation systems. And then, as mentioned before, bringing it up to code. So, in the 2021 project, we're proposing to have one single pump station, put the intermediate pumps that were previously on top of the Backwash Supply Basin and rather had a very large visual impact, putting that pumping equipment down in the pump station that's in between the two reservoirs. And that approach saves about $1 million in construction and really helps plant operations staff during construction in being able to have sufficient volumes of water for filter backwashing. So they'll have enough constraints and headaches to deal with, with the contractor. So everything we can do to make operations more reliable for them is a big part of our design and our proposed sequence of construction. We're replacing the ozone-related equipment because it has been rebuilt once, and even after it was rebuilt, its performance was never as good as original. There are some parts of the system that are unreliable, and because it's 23 years old, and because there's been tremendous advances in this technology over the last 20 years, component obsolescence issues are difficult, and it's hard to get technical support for the equipment from the manufacturer. As mentioned before, this project was previously scheduled to coincide on the calendar with the Clearwells Replacement Project. And one new thing that we're doing, and we will be again coming in front of Common Council this year, is we're proposing to pre-purchase the ozone equipment. This is something that Jacobs and other national engineering firms do standard practice for ozone equipment and UV disinfection equipment. And what we'll be doing is putting together a competitive bid package that we will send out to the leading suppliers and say, "Give us your best bid." And we'll evaluate those bids. There'll be both financial and technical information they'll submit. We'll make a recommendation to the city on who to select, and we will recommend that the city enter into an agreement with the successful bidder for them to prepare detailed shop drawings in 2021 of all the equipment and components and instrumentation that is included in their package for us as engineers to review and do our detailed design around. And then, the main equipment purchase agreement is going to be assigned to the general contractor in the Clearwells Replacement Project bid package. And this is a process that we've not only used for water and wastewater utilities all over the world, but we've also used it with the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program and with the Clean Water Fund Program. So, our schedule. We are working right now feverishly on our 30% complete design documents and an ozone equipment procurement package. As mentioned, we will be coming again to talk with you about the pre-purchase when we have that information available for your review. We'll be wrapping up design this year and then heading into permitting agency review, which is not only the city, but the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources and the Public Service Commission, who we have met with in the last two weeks to reintroduce this project to them. And we are inviting them to our design milestone review meetings, so that hopefully their review process goes really quick, because they'll be so familiar with the project. So hoping to award the construction bid no later than April of '22, and then being in construction for about two and a half years. So, the estimated cost of this project today is $26 million, maybe over. We are producing a new construction cost estimate and overall project cost estimate, including non-construction costs, with our 30% in early July. Costs have changed up and down due to COVID, so we're revisiting every major piece of this project to make sure we're building enough time and enough money into the phases, and we can put together for James a reasonable cash flow schedule for construction, so that the city knows how the project funding will be spent over time. We're already working with the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. We're queued up and have completed our preliminary paperwork, and the plan will be to replace that loan, repay it with user rates. So here's the fun part of the meeting. We've created two options that we're considering and discussing with the two leading pre-stress concrete tank manufacturers. This first, and the colors in the animation are a little off. I know the tops of the tanks look really kind of white. Well, actually, here they look kind of cream. We're going for kind of a cream color, which is similar to what exists already on the CT Backwash Supply Basin, the holding tank, and the said basins. We plan to have finished materials on the pump station and the reservoirs that are substantially similar to those concrete tanks that I just mentioned, and then other stations that are on site, matching the brick, matching the security glass block window, the window sills, the standing bronze metal seam roof. So this is one option that we've developed, and I will tell you that we got good ideas from the public meeting, the neighborhood meeting in 2017, which has fed directly into these ideas. Here's another view, looking from Lake Shore and Washington. And then the second option we have has less brick and more of the holding tank sort of large stone veneer finish, and some brick on the pump station, and a colored cementitious coating for the upper third or so of the reservoirs. Great question asked by Planning Commission last week was, "What about lake flies?" And I'm like, "I know, lake flies are a real design criteria for my team on every Oshkosh project." So, we're talking with the tank suppliers tomorrow and Thursday about how smooth can those finishes be, so that we don't have little lake fly bodies on it? Because we don't want to have to pressure wash and things like that. So, those are our two ideas so far, and I think, James, we plan to share them with the public here pretty soon, get some early input. And we're putting together cost estimates for these different optional finishes. That's something that the Public Service Commission cares very much about. If you add any architectural enhancements, they want to know that the community is endorsing that, has asked for that, and what the costs are. So, we, after this meeting, are going to be scheduling a neighborhood meeting, and we're going to complete, keep working on our design and all of our permitting documentation, and be in front of you again for equipment, pre-purchase, probably the July timeframe if things stay on track, and then for the construction contract award in the first quarter of 2022. And that's all I had. Thank you for your time.
All right. I have a couple of questions. During the 2022 to 2024 construction, is it anticipated that there would be any service impacts, pressure, backups, loss of water?
Great question.
And then, second question is, what would those water user rates be looking like as far as an increase?
Okay, that's yours. Yeah, I'll do the easy one. So, the complicated part of this project is that we are constructing replacement finished water storage in the exact same place as the existing storage, and we are constructing new pumping in the exact same place. And we're going to be putting in new ozone equipment in the exact same place. So the sequence of construction is a long document, and briefly put, we're basically going to be decommissioning half of every functionality at the plant and then replacing it and operating it for 45 days reliably. And while we're doing that, relying on the other half of that same said system to provide storage, pumping, disinfection. It's extremely important that we minimize any downtime of the ozone system because of its impact on water quality, all of the regulatory compliance, I shouldn't say issues, but there's a whole suite of regulations that must be complied with, and it's more challenging to do that when you're using chlorine, which is your backup system for disinfection, as opposed to Oshkosh, ozone. And also, ozone really helps with the taste and odor characteristics of the Lake Winnebago water. So, we are going to shoot for no interruptions of storage or high lift pumping, and when we need to switch to make critical connections to ozone equipment, we are going to limit those in time, and while we're doing that, we'll be using chlorine for disinfection rather than ozone.
And how long of a period, how long of a period of time would that be, that they're switching over again?
Hours, days? When, we did a, we did a project at the wastewater plant where we had to take the main raw sewage pump station out of service to put in new piping and valves, and we did it, we told the contractor, "You have to do it at the end of December or early January. You have to do it between 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning, or 1:00 and 4:00 in the morning." And you work, you work it out, so that all this piping snaps, you know, everything's ready to go, and you're, and you're not, you're decommissioning your primary systems for only a few hours. And the city can prepare for those switchovers by having water towers full, by having their Clearwells full, so that, you know, you won't notice. That's the goal, you won't notice.
Yeah, the short answer is, you won't notice interruptions because of the significant planning that's taking on in the background to minimize the timeframe and make sure that you don't notice. As far as the rate structure to repay the loan, it's actually going to be a much shorter answer. That's part of the analysis that we have Ellers do on an annual basis. You know, certainly, we've got some, some major debt that's being retired as a part of the last major plant reconstruction, which was completed about 20 years ago, which was also financed with Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. So that was, you know, some of our delay from 2007 to, you know, '17 when we were last working on this, is trying to make sure that we were matching up with some retirements. But until we, you know, get those final estimates from the team and start looking at it with Ellers, we're not going to know for sure.
But our last encounter with Ellers, where we were looking at the next five to seven years, would change, because that was not anticipating this, correct?
Actually, that was anticipating this project, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about the ozone parts and what they're saying. So, the last ozone treatment was put in when, so like 20-ish years ago?
1998, so it's about 22, 23 years old.
And parts of that are out of commission? Or what, what are you doing to make sure that this new one that we're putting in won't have those failures like the last one?
Okay, so we have no failures. We have no equipment failures. We have some equipment reliability issues, which require more attention, and, and some looming maintenance issues, but we don't have like a depot of all old parts to like do repairs.
You just brought attention to it, so I figured if we're getting a new one, you said like the contractors putting it in, do they, are there other systems like this being used in other places that they're not accustomed to just Oshkosh, that we have some kind of backup?
The other utilities in Wisconsin that use ozone are green The other utilities in Wisconsin that use ozone are Green Bay and Milwaukee Water. And they're doing some similar capital planning too. In fact, across the country, a number of ozone disinfection systems were put in about 1997, 1998, after the cryptosporidium episode in 1994 in Milwaukee. So all of those systems are becoming old and are being, and this is what we're hearing from vendors who provide the equipment, they're really busy right now.
I, I think it's more of a, the, the equipment has a designed useful life, and we're at that point.
Okay.
So it, it's not that, you know, there are, like Linda said, it's not that there are problems, and we've got redundancies built into the system so we can provide the treatment. It's just, you know, it's expected to last 20 to 25 years, and, and that's where we're at. So, we're planning with it at the end of its useful life to get it replaced with new current, you know, design, current technologies before we have those major failures.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Yes. Just to kind of tag onto that, in our industry, we have, we have standards, it's called five nines. You know, we're up 99.999%. Do we have similar standards for the water treatment plant? You know, we're, it's operational 99.999, you know?
Um, we just are always on.
Quite frankly, I think our target would be a little even higher than that because if we were not to hit that, and we would not have adequate storage in the system, we'd be looking at a boil water order. We haven't had any of those. So, you know, between the, and when we have to take equipment down at the plant, we're planning for it, we're making sure that our existing Clearwells are full, we're making sure that the water towers are all full. You know, so, and we've got 2.5 million gallons of storage at the plant right now, we've got 4.25 million gallons of storage in the system and towers. You know, between those two, that's an average, you know, non-summer days usage. You know, so we could in theory have the plant down for a day and be able to suffice with the storage that we've had because we prepared ahead of that downtime.
That's, thank you. You, you both have answered those questions well. One last, one last question for me. What was the cost of the project in 2017 versus today? Just, just ballpark numbers.
Just over 17 million. The estimated cost of the ozone and lock storage equipment is about 4 million, a little over, so that takes it up to 21. And I, and that's just equipment, that's not installation. So, you've got to add a couple of million on to, for the labor involved in replacing that equipment. And I'm putting out a bigger number out there than I think it really is. I think at 30% it's going to be a little bit less.
So, so 30% price increase from 17 till now?
Yes, but quite a bigger scope.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's a big thing. The liquid oxygen and the ozone generation weren't in that 2017 project. They were planned to be happening in '23 and '24, thinking the Clearwells would be just finishing up. So now that the Clearwells got delayed and we don't want to wait another three to four years to start those, we're putting it all together into one big package.
Good. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Two quick questions. One, actually, thank you, Councilmember Miller, for asking that one because that was one of them. Reduced capacity for the pumping, 3.6 million, that's, you know, 20% reduction. Concerns at all from your side of it? Forget about what the Fed's telling you to do, concerns?
The best way, I think, to answer that is, we've, we've talked about that a lot. The size of the structure itself is being built to accommodate the ability to install larger pumps and larger control systems down the road. So, you know, what are, you know, Linda described a very detailed analysis that looked at, you know, tens of thousands of potential futures and this sizing, 5 to 95% confidence interval, we're still sizing the concrete part of the structure to, if one of those 5%, you know, starts to come to fruition, we can start replacing pumps and control systems and be able to provide a higher capacity without having to redo concrete.
Perfect. Second, one of the neighbors' complaints, I think one of their biggest ones was just, one, how this thing looked, but also how immense it was, right? So has the height of this project changed at all? From those, for those Clearwell towers, is there really any significant, any change at all? I'm seeing a head shaking now.
From 2017 to now, no.
No. Just one, just, that's going to be a question. Of course, that was, I think that was their biggest thing, was the eyesore of their, some of these, the extension of their front lawns.
Right. It, it has a huge visual impact, and when you're above the flood plain, that's where you're at.
Just wanted to double check. Thank you. I assumed so, but wanted to double check.
I lied, I have one more question. In this, in this budget, and, and if you don't know, I apologize, this is just kind of off track with, with some of the cyber attacks we've seen lately and everything. Are we going to do anything to enhance the security of our, our facility and everything as part of this?
The control systems at the water filtration plant are 100% completely disconnected from the outside world.
Perfect.
Even when Linda's controls engineers want to come over and make edits to the program, they have to physically come to our plant, sit down at our computer, and access the coding. They cannot even remote into that system. So it is completely disconnected from the outside world.
Perfect. Thank you both.
Very informative.
We'll be back.
Thank you, everyone.
We're just anxious to see the next round.
Yeah, it'll be better. Thank you so much for your time and your questions. They were really good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Take a recess.
Yes, we'll recess 10 minutes. See you back at 6:00.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GUB TV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org.